Good afternoon.
Yes, yes.
Hello.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us, please. And I'm going to share my screen here. Welcome attendees as you're joining us this evening for the school board forum with tonight's candidates. We will get started in just a moment. As I see the participant list numbers going up. Just give us one moment to make sure that everybody gets into the room that wants to get here right on time at six. All right, well, welcome everyone to tonight's program. My name is Jessica McDonald. I'm a board member of the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, your host for tonight's school board forum for the Corvallis School District. Now, let's first get this out of the way. We're all old hands at Zoom, right? But this is a Zoom webinar, so please put questions into the Q and A box. And you know, you don't have to put on your video any of that. A webinar is great. You can sit back and relax. And this meeting is also being recorded and will be made available after the program through the League of Women Voters YouTube channel. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan education and advocacy organization. Now, the core of who we are is about empowering voters and defending democracy. What do I love about the League? I love that we work on issues that are important to me, to our community, to my family, from voting rights to climate change, community planning, everything in between. So if you're out there in the Zoom world and you're not yet involved in the League of Women Voters and you're interested, you're not really sure where to start. I encourage you to reach out to join this lovely group of people and find your own voice and your own way in the League and reach out to talk more. Our website is located at the bottom here. Also, while I have a captive audience, there are a few things coming your way with the League of Women Voters. First of all, two events that we have coming up, a legislative update with elected officials on Saturday, May 6th at 10:00 a.m. at the Corvallis Library Main Meeting Room. Additionally, later in May, we have the League's annual meeting. This is an evening discussion and presentation, both for members and for the public. And coincidentally, speaking of the school board, our guest speaker and the work of the school board, our guest speaker will be Melissa Goff, past superintendent for the Greater Albany Public Schools and current education policy advisor to Governor Kotek. We also have some election reminders tomorrow, the last day to register to vote for this May election. And then May 16th Election Day. Last year, in Benton County, the May primaries saw 45% voter turnout. And while this was the highest percentage per capita for any county in Oregon in that particular election, it still should be shocking that less than 50% of our votership is turning out in Benton County. We can do better. We will do better. So where do we all come into this? Make sure that you're talking to your friends, your neighbors, your colleagues, your family, whoever it may be, whether they live here or elsewhere. Tell them why you're passionate about voting and exercising your voting rights and encourage them to do that as well. A special thank you to each of our candidates for the Corvallis School Board for running for this important position and for joining us tonight to share your vision and goals for the school district and the board with voters. And I also want to send regrets from Sarah Finger McDonald, position seven candidate who was really hoping to be here this evening, but unfortunately has one of the spring illnesses going around and was unable to join. So tonight we have Chris Hawkins, Stephen Castellano, Therese Jones, and Judah Largent from three positions up for vote in this May election. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. Sorry, just a second. There we go. Technology, as adept as we all think we are, inevitably something happens. That was a small hiccup in the grand scheme of things, right? Well, thank you all again for being here this evening. And this evening, we're going to start by hearing from each candidate as they discuss kind of an introduction of themselves. And what do you see as the most important issue facing Corvallis schools in the next four years? What role does the school board have in addressing these issues? So introduce yourself, talk a little bit more about that topic. Do you have a five-minute time limit for each candidate to speak to this issue? And first of all, we're going to go in this order for this question. We have Chris and Stephen, Therese, and then Judah. Okay, so we're going to start with Chris. Welcome.
Hi, and I first of all, just want to say thank you for allowing us to be here today. It's a great venue for us to be able to present ourselves. My name is Chris Hawkins. I have lived in Corvallis for the past 30 years. I raised my three kids here, all of them graduating from CHS. And I currently have four grandchildren who are in going to school in the district. I've been an educator for the past 37 years. I taught elementary school. And then I became the crisis response coordinator for the school district where I supported students in crisis, those students navigating poverty, students who are homeless, students who were in the juvenile system and foster care system. I also facilitated the threat assessment process for the district and coordinated in the event there was a death or a major traumatic event. I brought in a team to support staff. I think for our most important issues right now, currently in Corvallis, I think, well, everywhere in the nation, student safety is a big issue. I think we need to look at external threats as well as threats and disruptions within the school and disrupting everyday learning. Unfortunately, budget cuts is something that we're experiencing right now. We need to look at that to maintain the level of services and support that we currently provide. And as well as in the nation, teacher retention. We want to keep the best teachers here in our district. I think the school board has a job to listen to students, parents, and the community. But also, most importantly, importantly is to be the stewards for the needs of the children. I believe what the children need should be our first priority. I think we can do that by first, as school board member, be visible in the schools. I think we need to be advocating to the State Department for more funding and to continue the services that we are already offering and if not more. I think as a school board member, being the voice for kids with special needs and circumstances and making sure that we have the best educators for all our students. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris. And Stephen, the same question.
Hi, I'm Stephen Castellano. I moved here for the first time in 1987 when my dad got into the master's program for chemistry at OSU. So right off the bat, tremendous opportunity for my family. While I was here from 1987 to 1992, as a young child, the community has been here for me. It was here for me and for anything that I was going through. And I'm so grateful for the community and I want to give back. I want to give back with what I have, which is a master's degree and experience in a variety of different industries. And having been published three times in varying ways. I see the biggest problem, which would make it more complicated with the impending budget cuts, is the test scores and the graduation rates. They need to go up. And my plan would be to advocate and support for not only more funding, but more support staff and utilize the internship program to get more support staff and particularly in-school tutors free at the point of use for all students without needing to pay.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you for everyone that is taking time this evening to to view this either, you know, now or at a later time. It's really encouraging as a board member to know that the community wants to participate in these conversations and is willing to take time out to hear what, you know, a handful of people running for school board have to offer, have to say. So we're really grateful for that. I have been a board member now for six years. I've been a resident of Corvallis for 10 years. I'm a native Oregonian with a minor detour by way of Washington and later Chicago before coming back. I was motivated to run for the board because my son was in kindergarten and we were endeavoring in this lengthy 13-year relationship with the school district. And it made sense that as a parent, I would be really in tune and paying attention for those years to what the schools were doing. And so because I would be watching so closely and living at firsthand, it seemed a natural extension to say, how can I support this in a in a way that would, you know, allow that focus that I'll already be bringing to reach more people than just my own household? So we have officially this year crossed over the halfway mark of our relationship with with the Corvallis School District as my son wraps up his sixth grade year. And most of that time I have served on the on the board. So it's been a pleasure to be part of the policymaking work that are that the Corvallis School District does that I then see trickle into his classroom and then come home in the form of the stories that he has to tell me about the things that he is doing at school because of that overall vision that the school board sets. And I guess what I would say is two things. One of the most important things that faces the school district is not new right now or in these four years, but it is the importance of setting a very clear vision for the leadership of the district about what we need to do and prioritize to best serve the children and the families that are in our community. That's all the time, every time. If you're asking what's an important priority for the board, that's going to be that's going to be it right at the top of the list. Beyond that, I would really echo what what Chris brought about the need for focus on student safety. And I guess I would extend student safety into saying, what we're really that what that really translates to is an urgent need for our teachers to know how we are spending our resources in our district to help them be successful in the task that they have to teach our children, to help them be successful as they are growing in citizenship, as they are growing in their academic readiness, as they are growing in the people that will become the future leaders of our community, people we will hire, people we will work with, right? So our teachers really need to know and see very clearly how the choices that we make as a district are supporting that main goal. And I think as a district, we have some work we can do to improve our communication with our with our staff. And so I think one thing we will need to focus on in the coming year, especially in light of the potential reductions that may be coming in our budget, is very clear communication about how each decision that is made ties back to those key, those key goals that we have as a district and where we are placing the teachers and their needs, first and foremost, in how we are making those decisions. So we do, we are going to have hard decisions to make. They, it's not going to be a fun cycle with in this biennium for sure. But most importantly, what we need is to have the teachers and the the school district leadership united in the understanding that the decisions we are making have the the best possible way to raise was the rising tide for everyone, right? Like that's kind of that will need to be our focus. So anyway, that's it for me, but thank you so much for the opportunity to start out with these introductions and I'll hand it over to Judah.
Great. Thank you. Judah.
Hi, my name is Judah Largent. I use he/him/his pronouns. As a professional, I am a juvenile public defense attorney. And why I chose to run for school board is I saw the difference that policies made to very, very vulnerable children, children in foster care and children involved with the justice system for their long-term outcomes. And I was impressed and I wanted to be a part of that and ensure that there was quality policy being enacted for our most vulnerable students. As to what is the most important issue, I've, I would echo what Chris said about safety, but taking that from a different perspective, what we have seen with our crumbling social system and support network is that it has crumbled. It has reached the very youngest children. And the blowback has come to the schools to be dealing with extensive mental health needs, lack of access to medical care, lack of access to behavioral supports, and dealing with that in combination with the legislature right now discussing cutting some of those direct supports that the school, the one of the last lines has to offer. And as a juvenile public defense attorney, I see what happens when one thing is cut for for children. We see which children barely have their heads above water and are about to drown. So how are we going to deal with a larger crumbling social network with very limited resources that are drying up themselves? So we can best support these children and these families in our community and thinking about safety from a holistic model. There's not one single thing that makes a child safe or unsafe, but there is a network of things and the school is just one part of that network, but we are being asked to pick up pieces that schools ordinarily don't have the power or the capability to provide. And how are we going to do that for children when it's not available anywhere else? Thank you.
Thank you, Judah. So now we go on to a list of questions that we have prepared in advance. And I will also remind those in the audience that if you have a question, please do put it into the Q and A box. And with that, we're going to go on to our first question with one-minute responses or trying to keep your, I'll be your timekeeper, so try to keep your responses to one minute. And for this one, we will go in the order of Therese, Judah, Stephen, Chris. I will repeat that. You don't have to remember. The question is, based off of really what we were just talking about, safety came up many times here. How do you understand the relationship between safety and academic outcomes? What current or future policies do you support that prevent bullying and ensure that all students feel equally safe and welcome? Yeah, and we're going to start with Therese. And Therese, before your time begins, can I confirm if I'm pronouncing your first name correctly?
You are. Thank you for checking.
Thank you. Great. Okay, now.
Okay, great. Okay, so could you just very quickly, could you summarize the question one more time for me?
Yes. How do you understand the relationship between safety and academic outcomes? And the next piece of that question, what current or future policies do you support that prevent bullying and ensure that all students feel equally safe and welcome?
Great. Okay, thank you so much. So to the first part of that question about safety and academic outcomes. So we know that, you know, this is not new. In, it is hard for humans to do well when they do not feel safe. And one of the things that we have seen happen in our classrooms and and not just in our classrooms, but in general, is that as there has been an increased concern about student safety and teacher safety, we are seeing the focus of our classroom time shifting toward how do we maintain safety? And less we are then able to focus on things like, how are we going to improve academic rigor? Our district is doing a really wonderful job right now, engaging middle school staff in particular. I think we've seen this hit our middle schools the last year in a kind of a unique way. We are seeing collaboration with our middle school staff around how to create an alternative pathway that can create a better learning environment for the kids for whom the mainstream classroom space right now is not leading to their sense of feeling safe and therefore compromising the instructor, the teacher's ability to feel like they can keep everyone in the classroom safe, including themselves. So what we know is that we need a different approach to addressing those kids and helping them meet their learning needs. And you know what? Just one thing I realized is that I'm not, I don't have a way to keep my time. I didn't set up a timer. And so will you tell us when we're out of time?
We, yes, I will unmute or do a wave and or do a wave and you are at the end of your minute.
Okay, perfect. And I also didn't, I'm sorry, I'm a terrible student, but I forgot to record how much time we had. So thank you for your patience and I will mute now.
Thank you very much. Judith, did you need the question repeated or? Okay.
Thank you for unmuting me. I apologize. I'm having some technical difficulties this evening. To echo what Theresa said, that we know that academic learning is the thing that comes last for children, that first they need to have needs met, they need to feel safe, they need to feel secure, and then learning can happen. My mother is a retired special education teacher and she once had a long discussion when she told me that she believed that most of the students in her classroom now that their primary issue was trauma and was not a learning disability. And so it was trauma that was impairing their ability to learn. So how do we structure classrooms and learning environments for all children, for children who are struggling, who might be what people consider to be a safety risk, but are children who are learning, who need support and need tools and all the children around them? And how do we strike that balance between safety and inclusion? Because you can never completely have both. So I do believe in the Corvallis School District's current policy about maintaining students in learning environments and not excluding them as part of disciplinary practices as often as possible, unless a very high threshold has been met. And that is my minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Judah. Stephen, the same question.
Well, it's been said before, but if a student doesn't feel safe, they're not going to learn. And in terms of bullying, I would support education to students on what is bullying, how to react to bullying, and how to report bullying. And to make sure there are consequences for bullying, but also mental health services for students who are traumatized as well as the students who are doing the bullying, so they can learn healthier ways to cope. Thank you. That's my minute.
Thank you, Stephen. And Chris, same question.
You know, all students have the right to feel safe in school and it really should be a sanctuary for all students. We have current policies that we don't tolerate behaviors that are threatening or bullying. And we have a strong threat assessment process. We create safety plans. We have several methods for students to report bullying. However, we know it still happens and we need to continue to give the tools, kids the tools they need to stand up to bullies. We also have a couple of programs in place that are designed to build the power of social networks among students that that prevent bullying and suicide, actually. These student-led programs strengthen the support, builds protective factors and improves self-esteem. And we need to get more kids involved in that as well as we need a student campaign to teach kids to tell when they hear something or when they're being bullied, they need to report it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. How do you define equity in terms of education? And what is the proper role of a school board in working towards equity? Judah, we have you first for this question.
Yeah. I'm sorry about that, folks. Equity is equal ability to access the information and learning, even if students cannot all access that information or learning in similar ways or need different supports. I believe the proper role of the school board as leaders is to come to the front and be developing policy, but also coming around the back and seeing how the policy is enacted and how that is impacting students. And this is a wonderful way to engage children and families to see how these policies are impacting students in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Judah. Chris.
Equity means that every student is given what they need in order to fully participate in their education. And support is should be tailored to their unique needs with a focus on students who have been historically marginalized and who face additional barriers. School boards should make sure that equity is a district goal, number one goal, I think, and has the funding to implement programs and staff and to make sure we have a superintendent who will, and luckily we do, who is passionate about equitable district, equitable programs, curriculum, and supports that.
Thank you, Chris. And Stephen, same question.
Yes. Equity would be each student getting the support services they need according to their need. And equity should be promoted by providing and supporting and advocating for the support services, including in-school tutoring services, each according to the student's needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And Therese.
So I think we have a pretty good working definition of equity. So what I will say is that how will a district know if they're making progress on the issue of equity? Thinking about public health models of like social determinants of health, we know that we are on the right track in terms of addressing equity when we can't look at things like a zip code or a race or ethnicity or sexual orientation or religious identity category and predict what is going to happen for that child in terms of their outcomes, right? So like the role of the school board as a policymaking board is to ensure that we are creating the policies that will help us achieve that, those outcomes. The school board is is a is a vision board, right? So we set a, we set a high mark for what the district should achieve. We hold the superintendent accountable to make progress toward that. And then we look to see, are we moving in the right direction? And if not, then how do we adjust? We need to tap course. Um, that's my minute and that's my timer so that I don't go over. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question. How would you identify and serve the needs of vulnerable student populations such as students facing housing insecurity, students in the LGBTQ plus community and English language learners? So that the students in these groups feel safe, welcomed, and able to effectively learn and succeed in school? So with that, it's a long question. I'm going to start this time with Stephen.
Yes. I would, I would, well, circling over my words. I would direct them to support services both within the school and in the community for their given needs in those given groups. And educate students to not not stigmatize these groups either, because a lot of these groups have been stigmatized historically. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Chris, same question. And Chris, you're on mute.
Thank you. A lot of my work with the district has been around serving the needs of vulnerable students. And I think first of all, to identify and serve, you must, number one, build trust. Build trust with the students and with their families. You have to be willing to create, to be creative and work to find the resources needed for each family. We, as the district, need to continue to build strong relationships with our partnering agencies. And as school board members, we need to create funding to support all kids and to be a voice for our marginalized students and to have a great bank of resources as well as supportive staff.
Thank you, Chris. Therese, same question. Thank you, Chris. Uh Therese, same question.
Thanks. So um these are really um in many ways, these are distinct groups of students. And so uh what it would take to serve each of them, oh, they all deserve a minute um to talk about that. But uh what can we do collectively in terms of serving students that are 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 facing risks? You know, interestingly enough, the things we need to serve those students, if we have them in place, um they actually will probably serve a lot more people too. Um, things like uh ready access to mental health, um the ability for um flexibility so that the families can be involved and connected with the district, um offering um as much flexibility as we can um for learning needs. Um, resources, making sure students get resources into their homes. These are not specific to these students, but the the students that you've mentioned in here, they may face some additional hurdles to being able to get those resources. But if we as a district make those services robustly available, um then everyone will benefit, um such as our investment in mental health as an example. Um, which certainly serves this group of students, but serves many more as um many more in addition. I'm going to stop using the timer because then it's just a distraction.
Thank you, Therese. And Judah, same question.
Thank you. I love the slogan that comes from the disability justice community that is nothing about us without us. So first, going and jumping off of what Chris said about building trust. First, we need to build trust with students so that we can communicate with them on their level, so we can identify what those needs are. Because they may not be what they we think they are. And to brainstorm, not put the onus on the child to develop solutions, but work with them to see what solutions we have available that they believe would work for them and really be implementing policies, new policies and procedures that are coming from what it's what children and families have vocalized and solutions that they believe will also work for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next question. What is the impact on tightening school budgets and spending priority priorities? How do you propose meeting these significant challenges? And with that, we're going to start with Chris.
Yeah, this is, this is, these are big challenges. And unfortunately, that's where we are today. Um, I think for school budgets, the priority is what's best for kids, right? And so we need to continue to find resources. And if that's the financial resources, we need to find those. And number one is to contact our state department. I'm going to do that before the May 16th date. Contact our state and demand that we have more money coming to our district. Um, I think also with that, um we need to with budget cuts, you know, with children being our priority, we also need to ask students, parents, teachers, administrators, what are their priorities when it comes to um actually making budget cuts? And um really working towards those challenges. It's not a fun time at all when we have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh Steven, same question.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, spending cuts is going to make it harder to get the supplies and pay for staffing that we need. Um, we need to, yes, we need to advocate for more funding. I'm uh not opposed to raising taxes on the wealthy for that funding. Um, but where we can hire interns and have more interns in the internship program. Uh, it would really help to be able to have interns that low or no cost uh basically backup staff would really help with the cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Steven. Therese, and I just a reminder, I realized we're kind of um going through some uh several people with the same question. Just for the audience, I'll reiterate that the question is on uh the impact on tightening school budgets and spending priorities. And how do you meet, uh how do you propose meeting uh these challenges? And Therese, your minute now.
Thank you. So um the thing is that every single dime that we spend on our schools is important to our kids. And so they're the only solution to this is to insist that the state do its job uh to fund our our schools, our K-12 systems, not just our K-12 systems, our community colleges. We need to insist on this as a state as we need to insist on it. Um, we don't have another, there's not another viable option. There is no non-essential service that we can cut. We can't cut EAs. We need them. Uh, we can't cut the librarians, we need them. We can't cut our curriculum adoptions because we need relevant current curriculum. So we have one solution to this as a state and it is to insist that Oregon step up and do its constitutional duty and fund our schools. And um how exactly we do that is it's we're not going to do it just in Corvallis, run it by ourselves. This is going to require every school district in this state to step up and tell Oregon that we are not going to settle their budget gap on the backs of our youth. Uh, we just, that's not an acceptable solution. Um, to that end, I do want just want to respond to one thing that I've heard mentioned a couple of times here. Um, I I work with interns and interns are not up, they're not a a personnel solution. Interns are here to learn from us. They need our mentorship. They take time from our district. They take investment from our from our district. And if we use them for anything other than that, we're shortchanging their future as well. We do not need to bring in volunteers. We need to insist that the state fund us. That's what we need to do.
Therese and Judah, wrapping up this question with you.
I'd like to cut to what happens in the eventuality of the state cuts budgets. Children, children will suffer. Children in this district will suffer. And there's nothing that can possibly be done to fully mitigate that. Less money is less money. The money is being allocated where it is with the funds that we have and with less funds will be less things. And so truly being transparent with our community and letting them know how the vision has driven what we have chosen to cut, where we have chosen the suffering to happen is incredibly important. Because what we will do is be facing down hurt and that should be with openness and honesty and accountability to, yes, we did make that decision because we had to, because we had to. We don't want to. We had to. And truly being open about what the process is like. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Judah. Now we're on to our next question. How do you think the school board could improve communication both with the public uh or with the public and should the current mechanisms for public input be changed? So I'm going to read that again. How do you think the school board could improve communication with the public? And should the current mechanisms for public input be changed? Therese, we have you first.
So I would love, I'm going to work backwards on this question. I would love to see us revise the mechanisms for public input. Um, they are not very dialogic. It is a one-way uh, it's a one-way conversation. Someone comes, they share a comment with us. There isn't really an opportunity to interact with that comment in that context. And then we may or may not, in a very full agenda, ever be able to come back to and meaningfully engage that feedback. I think what we know is that public comment is not a space where the board can do the hard uh the hard lifting work of actually engaging with the community. I'm not saying we shouldn't have public comment in our meetings. I'm saying that that is not a, that's not a venue by which um real conversation between the board and the community can take place. We need some other, we need some other formats for that. Um, so how can we improve communication? Um, we need to have much more clear um understanding for the community about how the board entertains subjects, right? We get these agendas. People don't know how something gets on an agenda. They want the board to talk about or reflect or review. They have no, there's no clear understanding how to get that in front of us. Honestly, the board members probably aren't entirely sure either. We get an agenda. And we're so thankful that our for our our chair works all of that out because there's so many things to talk about. That process is just not very well articulated. So I think an area where we really need to improve is making sure the community understands uh the process and can participate meaningfully in giving some guidance to what commands time in a school board meeting.
You, Therese. Judah, same question.
Thank you. In a similar way, I'm going to approach this backwards. First, our school board meetings right now are not accessible. They're not accessible to individuals with disabilities. It can be very difficult to understand how you would have uh sign language interpreter or second language interpreter to be able to access the meeting. It's would be nearly impossible for, say, a working parent who works evenings, who doesn't have childcare, to understand how they could come and engage with our school board. And so I completely agree with providing an alternative venue, not just for education, for a one-way receipt of information. But also that the school board is making itself more open, more accessible and more inclusive in the way that we hear from people. Because just the way it is structured now, we are limiting the types of voices that can even show up to the literal table that the school board meets at. And making sure that there is room for all voices and it is an accessible space to come and engage. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Steven, same question.
Yes, um, I believe that the school board meeting should be accessible to all. We should be inviting people to share the ideas they have, the concerns they have with the school board and be able to implement that. And I've heard the idea of surveys. I fully support that as well. Surveying families and students and the teachers and staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Steven. And Chris, we're wrapping up this question with you.
Great. Yeah, I agree with Therese and she said it so well. Um, the one thing though that I would also add to that is uh I believe recently our school board had listening sessions to the public. And I think that is a key way to uh allow the school board to hear from the community. And I know it's difficult to have evening meetings um where, you know, you go to a a place and meet. Um, because parents are busy, you know, they've got to feed their kids, they got to get their kids to do homework and all of that and just want to be with their kids. And so um but I think the virtual way might be a key way to do that. Um, we have found that in a lot of different ways, um virtual meetings have really increased um the po- the amount of people that have attended. And so I think that's something we should uh look at. And then I also heard some teachers the other day say something about they just want to have more sessions to be able to talk to school board members where it's not at a school board meeting. So I'd like to see us do some more walk and talks where we just, you know, go for the walk or do a listening session at a school after a step after a school day with staff as well.
Okay, thank you. So our last prepared question. What can our schools and curriculum do to address the racial and economic disparities some children face? How can schools prepare students who recognize these disparities and their impacts? Now, we've talked about pieces of this question in other responses. But uh we're going to focus on this one. And I'm going to read that question again for the audience. What can our schools and curriculum do to address the racial and economic disparities that some children face? And how can schools prepare students who recognize these disparities and their impacts? Judah, we are going to start with you.
I think this is a two-part question. First is to teach students that these realities exist. That they are real. We have an excellent curriculum around addressing uh how history has dealt current disparities. And that racism and classism and all those other isms are real things and recognition is the first step. And the second step is going back to that equity piece. How are we making sure that students can learn and truly absorb information on in an equitable way, in an equal way, by providing different supports to different youth? Because different youths need different things. We cannot fix issue, the systemic issues around um racism and classism, but we can focus on making sure that that is not occurring in a major extent and that we're really watching that in our schools and providing students different levels of access and services. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, uh back to you.
You know, the idea of inclusive and accessible publication, public education really means every student gets an opportunity to learn and succeed in life, no matter what their race or the parent's source of income is. And the reality is, we have more work to do to make sure that we have access to educational opportunities, that that's available to all. And that our curriculum reflects, represents all students. And when we approve curriculum and when we approve funding for our schools, we need to ask ourselves as board members, are we measuring the disparities in in the outcomes? Is this pro- curriculum um or program going to help every student? And are the decisions that we're making, are they making it possible that every student can graduate and has a successful pathway?
Thank you, Chris. Steven, you're next.
Yes, uh, I think there's a great point about educating students on classism and racism. But also, um, I mean, just to learn, there's two things that I found in school that you need to learn. One is one-on-one attention, the other is feedback. And having the support systems in place to get proper feedback to students and the proper tutoring to students that are free at the point of use without going into the community and paying for it would be great. And TAs and tutors I believe can be done by college students, can be done by interns. Thank you.
Okay, and Therese.
Thanks. So um I think someone already, damn, I think maybe it was Judah very first mentioned that um we begin by acknowledging that these disparities are real. Um, there is a lot of conversation um taking place around whether or not we should be teaching uh this content. To me, that's a foregone conclusion. We don't not teach uh that these disparities are real. Our children live in them. They already see them. We need to give them um, we need to create a space where dynamic learning is happening so that we not only can acknowledge that they're real, but we can talk about how we got here. And then we, from there, we can then talk about how are we going to un-get from here? What even comes next, right? We can't really do that if we're not even willing to say that it's real. And for us to say that it's real, it means that they have to be found in our curriculum. So are we teaching? Uh, can our students find themselves, right? Every identity, every every category that we talk about, are they represented? If they're opening a textbook and they can't find their story, then they are not going to make a meaningful connection with that. They will not feel represented. We will not do a service to that student because they can't connect with the material. We won't do a student service to any of the other students because by not finding those stories in there, we reinforce the myth that that those stories aren't real. People have to find themselves. They have to find their narratives there. So that's really important. Um, in terms of um, you know, what it would take for them to be prepared, I think mostly we just have to get out of their way. I I think our youth are already very, very ready to uh especially early on in in education. They're ready to embrace. They're ready to collaborate. They're ready to work together. And then sometimes we we get in the way. And so some of it is about stepping back and allowing that to unfold in a very organic process. And I, well, I'm out of time, so I can't say more about what that would look like, but.
Well, thank you so much for all of you. And I see that we have some questions from the audience here that I'm going to transition into. And with this, I will uh call on the next speaker and and make sure that we're going in a rotating um method. First question, what is your stance on banning books in the classroom and at the Shoal Library? And with this one, we're going to start with Steven.
Uh, yes, uh, my stance on banning books in the school library is, I'm really wary of the practice of banning books, you know, like I wouldn't want to ban Wizard of Oz or anything like that. Um, I'm just really wary of that policy of the just banning books from the library that have been there. Um, so I don't think I would want to do it.
Chris. Uh, thank you. Chris, same question.
I don't believe in banning books. Um, unfortunately, our district has robust process for reviewing media to use instruction and in our libraries.
And Therese?
Uh, I guess the first thing I just want to point out is that that's not under the purview of a school board. Um, school boards make policies around how curriculum or how a school district will review cur- um review a book, but we don't ban books. So um I think the spirit of this question is um, you know, trying to get at um maybe a a political undertone around um whether or not I think banning or uh candidates think that banning is an acceptable practice. But in what's really important in a school board election is you understand, when you're voting, you're voting for people, you're not voting to give them the power to do this. Because that's outside the function of a school board. That said, I don't really think because that's outside the function of a school board. That said, I don't really think much value comes from banning books.
Thank you, Therese. And Judah?
I believe it was Judy Blume who said that if you want to get a child to read a book, you leave it about the house and tell that child that they're a little bit too young to read it and they'll read it for certain. And I agree with her, it's not within our purview to ban books. And if you're asking for my personal opinion, I don't believe in banning books, but I do believe in preparing our students to be meaningful consumers of information. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the next question, we will start with Chris. Go to Steven, Judah, and Therese. Okay, the next question is from an audience member. I trust that each of you is familiar with the intent of Title IX in regards to women's athletics. In light of that, do you believe that it is fair for biological boys to compete with biological girls in high school sports? They're not asking about Oregon law. So again, I'm going to go in the order of Chris, Steven, Judah, Therese. Chris?
I'm sorry, can you ask that question again?
Absolutely. After I unmute. This person was talking about Title IX in regards to women's athletics. In light of Title IX, do you believe that it is fair for biological boys to compete with biological girls in high school sports?
Well, I think, you know, Title IX was set up so that there's equity amongst all students. And I think that Title IX allows boys and girls to play in sports together, and it has for years. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. And Steven?
I would take the stance that we should be respecting everyone's gender preference and, you know, respect them in using their pronouns. And that's actually something that strikes really deep to home for me because I have a family member who's transgender. Thank you.
Thank you. And Therese?
So, you know, totally not to like, just, you know, blow out the flame of what the spirit of this question is, but it's not within the purview of a school board to have an opinion about whether this should be something that happens. It's our job to create policies that are enforced by the US Department of Education. So if you want to know my opinion, let's grab coffee and we can talk about it. In a school board election, what I have to say is I'm constitutionally mandated to enforce the guidelines of the US Department of Education. And in my position as a school board member, I'm not likely to reverse any policies of the US Department of Education. So I don't really, this question doesn't really contribute to advancing the understanding of decisions that our district would need to make as it relates to the school board. But absolutely email me. I'd be happy to talk about and I'd be happy to hear what you are worried about because I imagine that behind this question is a concern. And as its constituent, I want to hear about your concern, but not necessarily give time to debating something that a school board functionally couldn't decide or take action on contrary to public law anyway.
Thank you, Therese. And Judah?
First, for clarity, I am an openly transgender man. And so I'm a person who has a different understanding and experience behind this question. I've heard this question a number of different ways. If you're asking what I'm going to do as a school board member, I will do my utmost to protect transgender students in their school experience and I will support policies that they be included in activities and events that other students are included in. Now, there's a lot of science behind why that particular question is mostly irrelevant, especially when it's talking about transgender students. But on the whole, if you're asking, who am I as a school board member? Yes, I will protect transgender students and I'll protect other vulnerable students. This is a personal lived experience for me and I want folks to know that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Judah. The next question from the audience is, how would you approach equity through a lens of intersectionality, particularly around disability and other intersecting identities? For this question, we are going to start with Chris. Then go to Steven, Judah, Therese.
Just to be fair, you did start with me on this last one.
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
Thank you. Steven, trying to keep the two together that are in the contested seat, in the contested director role. Steven? And if you'd like me to repeat the question, happy to.
No, I think I have an idea of what I'm going to say. I believe that equity should be there to, for instance, like students with disabilities get accommodations. And that's for equity because of the hurdles they have to go through from being disabled or whatever disabilities they have. And I have benefited from this throughout college, my college career because I was considered disabled and was allowed to get the accommodations that I needed based on my disabilities. So that's what should be done in schools in Oregon.
Thank you. And Judah?
Going back to that disability justice lens, thinking about how disability and other intersecting identities are contextual. And what's important about them is the context. And here, the school is the context. So what do we do when we're having students who have multiple levels of intersecting identities that might make them more vulnerable? And that is allowing students to have multiple levels of need and having that flexibility as much as possible to be meeting those needs. Because in every way, every single student is different, needs things a little bit different. And some students need things drastically different from the majority of their classmates. But we should still be able to have a flexible system to allow all students to meaningfully participate and feel welcome in their educational environment.
Thank you. And Therese, wrapping up the question with you.
Great, thanks. So I'm going to tell a very brief story about when we wrote the transgender student policy. And that was a really fantastic and dynamic experience in the school board. It was also not our finest moment because what we did was we drafted a policy with a bunch of people, none of whom were transgender. And so when I think about this question, I think about equity and intersectionality and identity categories. And I am reminded that there is no equitable pathway if the people that live those experiences are not part of creating the policy, creating the solution. We, in the end, thankfully, community members rose to the occasion and said, you're missing some really big things. And we went, oh, please help us. And then they did. And we ended up with, I think, a pretty solid policy. But what it did was it definitely highlighted the trap of hubris that because we had the ability to, we were there for the right people to. But we weren't the right people to. And so when I think about equity work in our district, I think about making sure that the individuals who have lived those experiences are informing that process and that we're not overly relying on me just because I happen to hold position three on the school board. That's an important role, but the most important role as a school board member is making sure that the right people are informing that process. We didn't do that the first time around with that policy, but we learned our lesson and I think we're much better positioned to do that going forward.
Thank you. Chris, did you have a?
Yeah, I will answer it now.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, our school system needs to fit the needs of all students rather than our students fitting the needs of our system. And I remember when I was a teacher, that there were several times when I was told I wasn't doing it right with certain students because I put them on a different pathway for their success. That was not the typical algorithm or whatever it was that other kids were doing in my classroom. And I think it's really important because, you know, kids with special needs navigate the world in different ways and we've got to find their unique pathway to make them successful.
Thank you. And we're on to the next question. For this one, we will go in order of Judah, Therese, Chris, Steven. And this one is from an audience participant. How are you supporting people with disabilities who are faced with mental health challenges? And again, we'll start with Judah.
Is that question to be directed at how am I personally doing this or how would I do this as a board member?
Well, I'm going to interpret the question for the audience. And if the person in the audience wants to counter that, you can write into the Q and A a clarification. But I would say, based off of how the question is written, that it is more about maybe just you and your role or potential role on the school board. I guess maybe a little bit of both there.
Thank you. So for my role on the school board, part of my platform is empowering students to help each other. That we have a lot of trainings, we have a lot of things available to our staff and our faculty, but mental health first aid and suicide intervention, overdose recognition and prevention are things that are not being widely accessible to students at an age-appropriate level. So a lot of students are sharing with peers when they're having struggles. They're not sharing that with safe adults who could connect them to services. So how can we educate students to help one another? To recognize this is an issue and that I can go and talk to this person. And these are the things that are going to happen. So we can increase access and also really putting out there as part of the culture, that mental health is physical health, that you cannot separate the two. That while they have somewhat different treatments or sometimes the same treatment, that this is not an issue that we should be stigmatizing, we should be talking about it. And that sometimes folks need to take a mental health day when they're not feeling well with their mental health, just like you might need to take a sick day if you have a cold. Thank you.
Thank you, Judah. And Therese, you'll be up next. And I also wanted to just point out that the attendee who wrote that question also did clarify that the intent was as a school board member. Thank you, Therese. On to you.
Great. So I really resonated a lot with what Judah had to say. I feel really fortunate that we live in a state that has provided some protections around student mental health and their ability to take time, step away. They're allowed a mental health day. I think that's really important in student success. Specifically, I'm hearing in this question that maybe some of the mental health processes that are in place are not necessarily designed with folks that are navigating disabilities. And so what can we do about that? We have some wonderful structures here in Corvallis around bringing mental health services to our buildings. We also have the ability to serve the entire family. So I think there's some value in that as well. But I guess what I would say on this question is that this is something where I would really need to look to the community and really draw from the expertise of individuals who do have experience navigating disabilities and attempting to access systems like mental health. I don't have a personal experience with that. I have observational data only. And so what I feel is that there are probably tremendous improvements that can be made. And I may not be the best person to recommend them, but I am a person who would love to hear those recommendations from those who could inform that from a personal lived experience.
Thank you, Therese. Chris, the same question to you.
You know, we're very fortunate in Corvallis that Corvallis has adopted a social emotional curriculum, starting at the elementary level. When I taught elementary school, we didn't have that. My students knew everything about stranger danger, but they had never heard anything about depression or anxiety or how to, or have any of the tools to help support them or each other. And so we're fortunately that we are now starting that, those conversations and that language at an early level. And we need to continue that. I think we also, at the middle and high school, we're having more conversations with students, giving them power and giving them words to support each other and to to seek out resources and help that they need. We've done a better job breaking down those barriers and the stigma, as Judah mentioned, and we've got to continue with that. We do QPR for our staff and the number of I really believe that has really affected how keeping kids safe from suicide because we've done that training and we've done some of those trainings with students as well. So it's breaking down those barriers and it's really starting those conversations at a young age.
Thank you. Steven, we'll end this question with you.
I would always be an advocate for and support policies that support needs-based supports and connecting them to the supports in the community that they need for whatever disabilities they have. Especially as someone who's worked with people with disabilities as a caregiver. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, and for this one, we will go Therese, Steven, Chris, Judah. This one is from an audience member. You have all shared the need for more K through 12 funding, but also the need to help, to receive help for students with mental health and housing. And you said that before students can learn, these other needs must be met. How do you reconcile these needs, given that money often comes from the same place for each of those different needs? Again, we're going to start with Therese.
This is such a great question. When we think back on the idea of like, when things were really great as a culture, when everyone was doing really well, you know, we had a 72% maximum income tax bracket in our country. We have, what, 38% now? We can't fund things if we don't generate revenue. So I don't think it's, it's not rocket science. If we want to fund these programs, we need to generate revenue. So ultimately, the solution is even beyond just the state of Oregon. We simply need as a country to accept that if we don't invest in our younger generations, we will pay for it. We are paying for it and we'll continue to pay for it. Immediately, in terms of Oregon and these pools of money, they do often come from similar places, but there is a lot of capacity for community collaboration. The Mental Health Initiative in Corvallis is one of those. It is basically a self-sustaining program now because the Corvallis School District took the initiative to get the certification necessary to bill Medicaid for an under-provided service and close the gap, the access gap, as well as generate the revenue to provide it. So Corvallis, we're not paying directly for the mental health services that we're providing in our school district. We are billing Medicaid for those. We are building private insurance. These kinds of creative collaborations are available to us and we need to explore them more.
Thank you. Steven, the same question to you.
I would just say I completely agree. The taxes of the rich are way too low. And we need more funding. Bottom line, we need more funding for education and housing and all these, you know, terrific supports that we have in our society. We need more funding and we need to advocate for it.
Thank you. Chris?
We all know that kids do well when their basic needs are met. And we fortunately have our, we have a team. We don't have enough, but we have a team of people that help families with resources. But they do work really well with our partnering agencies, with direct referrals, and really gaining those resources and matching those resources with their family and students. And again, I can't say enough about our partnering agencies. I mean, I had a student once who came in with holes in their shoe, duct tape around them. And, you know, they were just really falling apart and struggling. And they were not going to work that day because their shoes had holes in them. And I, you know, picked up the phone and called our assistance league and said, I need a pair of shoes right now. Can I come get some? And they said, absolutely. And that day changed completely for that student. He had a great day, the rest of the day, because he got a pair of shoes. And so I think it's really important that we give credit and that we work closely with partnering agencies. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. And Judah? Thanks. Thank you, Chris and Judah.
While we can't fix all these issues, we can ameliorate them. And that's why positions like the position that Chris used to hold are so important. I recall very vividly working with a client who was applying for housing services, and we kept getting a response, insufficient information on resident questionnaire, please use other form. Except for we didn't know what information was missing. No one would tell us, and we didn't know what other form there was. And it really took having somebody navigate through those services to make the services accessible because they are a Kafkaesque nightmare. And so having that available in the school district, while that's not a fix, is really important to be able to provide some level of access to the limited amount of resources that are available. So we might not be able to grow the pot tremendously, but we can make it accessible and we can walk families through that. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next question, we will go in the order of Chris, Stephen, Judah, Teresa. This is another audience question. Are you concerned that the Corvallis School District Administration is primarily white? And that the Corvallis School District struggles to recruit, retain, support, and promote staff of color? Is this at odds with equity goals? And I'm going to, again, read through, we'll go through Chris, Stephen, Judah, Teresa. Chris, you were on first.
That's a tough one. Because I'm speaking from a white woman's perspective, and I'm just gonna be very honest with you. This is a problem. It's a system problem. And yes, it does bother me. And yes, I would love to see different ways to recruit people of color and hear their voices and to have them working alongside with me as school board members as well as with our staff. I know that our district has done a few things to support bringing in people of color in leadership roles. And 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 I know it's not enough. So yes, it does concern me, and I would love to have more conversations with people about what we can do to help this.
Thank you, Chris. Stephen, the same question for you.
I would say it's just it's a systemic problem. It's the hurdles marginalized groups have to go through and the opportunities denied to them. And there should be no discrimination, obviously, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done in society to overcome these hurdles. And that'd be within and without the educational system. And I want to listen to solutions other people have.
Thank you, Stephen and Judah.
Of course, this is a systemic issue, but how do we address it? And so taking a clear look at hiring policies and ways where we invite candidates to apply is where that we can increase the likelihood of diversity. For example, instituting policies where you're somebody else is going through an applicant's application, and they are completely blocking out any identifying information about age, race, gender, sexual orientation, to make sure that we're considering quality candidates for who they are and not an internalized perception of them, because we can be sure that having this many white people around that there is going to be some internalized racism that we need to process through. We need to build structures around that we have white leadership looking at candidates, looking at recruiting, and how do we use science-backed policies to first attract diverse candidate pools and make sure that we're considering each individual for their qualifications and truly hiring the best people for the job. Thank you.
Thank you. And Teresa, we're ending the question with you.
Well, we don't just have a problem of recruiting, right? We have a problem of retaining, and that problem is bigger than just the school district. Although the school district and the culture of the school district is certainly important, we also have a sustainability issue of how expensive it is to live in Corvallis. And if you think about things like who has likely accumulated capital to be able to break into a market like Corvallis, it is far less likely to be your candidates of color. It's far more likely to be students that were able to get scholarships, get through school with less debt, have parents that could pay for them to go to school. They're not making loan payments. They can maybe afford to live here. There are a lot of factors in how it is that people can make a decision about where to land. And so this isn't even just about what can we do to change our recruitment process. It's what can we do so that our our students of color get to college and get out with the same or less debt than their white counterparts? That they get in and they get out at the same rate or higher than their white counterparts? These are all before they ever are applying to be a teacher in our district, things we have to be addressing. Here in Corvallis, we simply have to work as a community to make this place a a community that is sustainable and welcoming for families of color. And I think we've heard repeatedly that we have many families of color in our community who do not find that to be true here. And so this is bigger than just the school district. This is a Corvallis issue as well.
Thank you. We're on to our final two questions here for our candidates. The next question, the order of this responses will be Judah, Teresa, Stephen, Chris. And this is an audience question. A common critique of this school board and many school boards is the need for greater communication and authentic relationship building between students and staff. What strategies would you use to balance the limited role of school board members while also building these critical relationships? And again, we're going to start with Judah.
What I'm hearing in this question is built into a lot of uncertainty. So how do we reduce uncertainty? How do people know who we are and what we're gonna do? First is going back to that issue of accessibility, where people know what school boards do, know how the decision-making works, have access to those meetings and be able to see face to face. Obviously, people aren't gonna have a lot of one-on-one time, but how do we increase the perception that people know us, that people know what we're doing? And that is increasing communication out, increasing transparency and increasing accessibility, because the more uncertainty somebody has about what we do, science shows the more uncertain people are about who we are as a school board, the less likely they are to communicate with us. So how do we reduce that uncertainty to increase that communication? Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
I think there are a couple of things in this question that feel really important, and and I want to hone in on the part about the limited role of the school board member because I think that one of the challenges that we continue to run up against is just what is a school board or what do they do? And then if if that's not well understood, then what is meaningful interaction with a school board member might be harder to to understand. And so some of this is about messaging clearly, not just who we are individually as people, but also what is, what does the school board do for our community? What is the, what is its purpose in public education is is really important. The other piece that's really important in building these relationships is in simultaneously increasing accessibility to information and individuals while also balancing that sometimes the load that is perceived to be the work of a school board member deters very qualified, very capable people because they go, oh, my gosh, I I could not take that on. And so because we don't have this balance of what is reasonable to bring to a school board, ask from a school board member, and what is the role of a school board member, we lose out on individuals that would be wonderful because it's not a clearly understood role. So I think that's an area that I hope we can work on our communication with the public.
Thank you. Stephen.
I think it's an issue of transparency and that we need a mechanism to promulgate what we're doing, what we would be doing as a school board, and not only when we meet, but what we're meeting on and what policies have we set forth. Perhaps in the form of some sort of newsletter, whether it be online or whatever, but be able to have a mechanism to deliver that message. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chris, we're wrapping up with you with this question.
You know, I just was thinking how fortunate we are to live in a place where people get to listen to an event like this, to read the newspaper, to read the voter's pamphlet, and really make a choice about who they feel is going to represent them well. And I think that that's essential. I think for school boards, it's being transparent, as was mentioned already, and that we really need to increase accessibility and really make sure people have a voice and that we listen to them and we also act on what they're saying with their input. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our last question from the audience here, and for this one, we will go Teresa, Chris, Stephen, Judah. The question is, what do you think are the most critical issues facing educators today? How do you think we can better recruit and retain educators given these challenges? Teresa will be our first.
Yeah. So in some ways, I think public education is like giving a bunch of people a teaspoon and then telling them to fill up an Olympic-sized swimming pool and their water is coming from a fire hydrant. Like, how in the world are they supposed to do this with the tools that they have? It's overwhelming. And I think that the burnout that we face in educators right now that we talk about, we're losing educators, we can't retain them. It has nothing to do with their interest in teaching. It has nothing to do with their desire to be to to work with youth. It has everything to do with being asked to do a job with the resource with mismatched resources or inadequate resources. We need infrastructure to support K-12 education, and we are not going to see an improvement in retention of our educators until we can give them what they need to do their jobs. We are not going to see recruitment of educators if they think they're walking into a field that they have to study for five or six years, and then maybe they might last six years before they are exhausted and they need to go on and do something else. So we need, we need financial infrastructure for K-12. I don't think we have any issues. Our educators would not be perfectly willing to step into a classroom and face head on if they believed the resources they needed would be there when they get there.
Thank you, Chris.
You know, I'm speaking as a teacher. I, teachers are unique individuals. They give, give, and give. They work hard. And they want to make sure that their kids in their classrooms are successful. And when that doesn't happen, it's it's hard. It's tough. They take that to heart. And we have very, very dedicated teachers in Corvallis. But we do need some systematic changes. We need better funding. Obviously, we've already mentioned that. We need a place, we need Corvallis to be a place where teachers can have a house here. Many of our teachers live in neighboring communities because they can't afford to live here. And we all know that when you are part of the community you work in, that you live in, you know, it's you have more pride and more, you just want to be part of the community more, and you want to live here, and you want to be neighbors with your schools. And so I think that's what we also need to work on in Corvallis.
Thank you, Chris. On to Stephen.
Yes, I believe that the job of a teacher is big and daunting with a huge workload, not work-life balance. There's many issues. They need to have the funding, they have the equipment they need, but they also need support to share some of that workload with assistance, with teaching assistance. And they need to have that to not burn out. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen and Judah.
I'd really like to echo what Teresa and Chris said, that we need a systemic change. We need to be listening to teachers where they are now. As the son of a now-retired teacher, I, you know, recall that the the people that came in that helped my mom put together her classroom were my brother and I, that the 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 resources were lacking. And that until we have ways that teachers can feel successful, feel truly successful, that we're gonna continue to see this burnout, and it's gonna become more and more critical. We need a large change for our educators. And that is the same change that we need for our students, that it is all tied into one bundle, that teachers are not being selfish, that they are needing the same things that our students are needing. They need to feel successful, feel secure in their job, be able to sustain themselves and be a part, truly a part of this community, live here and work here if they so choose. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at the end of our time here, and I want to say thank you so much, school board candidates, for seeking to serve and serving, for those of you already on the school board, for being here tonight, for creating more informed voters, and for caring about our schools. I have a kiddo in elementary school right now. And what you are seeking to do and what you are doing is often a thankless position with a lot of work, and it is much appreciated and needed. I can guarantee everybody here is ready to vote in the May election. But what else can you do? Kind of coming back to get out the vote, get your friends, neighbors, family, colleagues, share your interest in the elections before us here in Benton County, and encourage them to vote. Thank you so much, candidates for being here this evening. And again, a reminder that we will have a recording for this evening's session, available through the League of Women Voters YouTube page. And I'm sure we'll put it out through Facebook and all kinds of different channels. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
And I really want to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us to be here today. This was a great forum. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. We always appreciate the engagement that you guys bring with the community, and we use the word teachers and educators, but I want to make sure you know we're also talking about the office staff, the bus drivers, the folks in the lunchroom, the EAs, like, gosh, the word educator means needs to capture all of you, but I fear the community might hear teacher, and we don't just mean teachers. We mean all of you should be able to afford to live in Corvallis. All of you need the resources you need to do your job. So make sure we're clear about that.
Thank you, Teresa, for that clarification and here, here. Yes. Have a wonderful evening.